Okay, it is Tuesday, November the 12th, 6:00 PM. And this is the November 12th meeting of the Carlton City Council Regular Session. Could you call the rule, please?
Yes, Mayor, we can. Counselor Thompson-Riser? Counselor Erickson? Counselor Hill? Counselor Ward-Mullen is absent. Counselor Skipper?
Here.
Mayor Watkins?
Here.
We are missing Counselor Thompson, excuse me. Ward-Mullen and Brendel, but we have a call.
Okay, great, thank you. Please join with me in saying a pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the God of the United States of America, and to the holy and sacred stands of our nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Alrighty, are there any changes or additions to the agenda?
Mayor, there are two additions to the agenda. The OHA line inventory, we'd like to talk after the recommendation to award the wastewater treatment plant improvements. And then there will be a tourism update that we can put to the end of the agenda after the Budget Appropriations Resolution 2024-363.
Thank you. Okay, ceremonies, appointments, and announcements. I think, do we have some of those?
Yes, we have an application for the Planning Commissioner, or Ashley Rhodes. Ms. Amerson, do you want to give more information?
Sure. So, we got an application from Ashley Rhodes. She submitted her application after the second time that we reopened. So, we had it opened, had extended the deadline one time, and she applied during that time. We have a vacancy that, with a term ending December 31st, 2025. She is the only applicant, so you can either choose to have her on commission or we can reopen again. It's up to you.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions or comments? Or Ashley, or did you want to say anything before we do this? What?
She's not here.
Okay.
I move that the City Council appoint Ashley Rhodes to the Planning Commission, completing the term expiring on December 31st, 2025.
Second.
Been moved and seconded twice. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, thank you. Alrighty, citizen comments. I do have, alright. So, this is the section of the agenda that allows members of the public to address the City Council on any, let's see, on any items on or off of the agenda. When invited by the mayor, council, members of the public shall come forward, state their name and street address, and direct all comments to the mayor. Comments are typically limited to three minutes, unless additional time is allowed by the mayor. We start this section with items that are not on the agenda. Does anybody have any comments, questions, that are not on our current agenda? In, in the, I couldn't hear you. On Zoom, okay. I need somebody to, okay.
I am now unmuted. This is Annette Madrid. I live at 11100 Northeast Medoffrey Road. I'm currently on the Planning Commission. My term expires next month, and I would like to offer my services in continuation of that term when it is deemed appropriate by the mayor and the council. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Madrid. Is there anything we need to do with that right now? Or, okay, great. Thank you, Annette. Are there any other comments on the agenda? Okay, does anybody have an item that is not on the agenda that they would like to address? I just did that, you're right. Okay, items that are on the agenda. Is there anything that they want to discuss on the agenda? Okay. Then we will move on to the consent agenda. Do, I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I move that we approve the consent agenda.
Is there a second? It's been moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Also, let the record show that Counselor Ward-Mullen did arrive. Alrighty. Moving on to ordinances, resolution, discussion and action items. Item A is Yamhill-Carlton School District Updates. What? Thank you, Mayor. Clint Raver is here from the Yamhill-Carlton School District, the superintendent.
Okay. Thank you for having us here tonight. I am Clint Raver. I'm the superintendent of Yamhill-Carlton School District. This is my sixth year in the district. I was the high school principal for two years, right at the start of COVID. 1920 was my first year at the high school. And in the spring of that year, we, we went into COVID. And at that time, our superintendent, after that year, left to take a job in Redmond, and we had an interim for a year. And then I, I stepped up to the superintendent position at that time. So, that's, that's my brief history here in Yamhill-Carlton School District. One of my goals, for a couple of years, Shannon and I have been talking about this, and then City of Yamhill as well, is to improve the communication amongst our communities and not just, not, we do a pretty good job with kids that, I'm sorry, with people that have kids in our schools. We don't do a great job with the citizens who might not necessarily have kids or grandkids in our schools. And that's one of our goals, to improve that communication. And with that, we, I really think it's important to have student voice and for, for students to be a part of the process and to, to learn, you know, what happens in our local government. And so, tonight, I'm actually going to pause my portion of it and introduce Natalie Frye. Natalie is a senior. Yes, a senior Yamhill-Carlton High School. And she's going to give an update on things that are happening around the high school. And then I'll talk about some general things that we're doing in the district. Natalie?
Hi, I'm Natalie. I'm the ASB president at the high school. I'm just going to talk a little bit, kind of, about like what he said, things that are happening at the school, and then also our leadership program. Fun fact, we actually, since last year to this year, we've increased by like 240% with kids that are involved in leadership. So, it's gone from 25 to 60 kids, which is really awesome. And we have two classes now. One is a beginners, which is more like underclassmen that are getting involved with it. And then we also have our advanced leadership class, which is more of everyone that's on the ASB, and just like class representatives and stuff like that. It's actually exciting next, I think it's next week or in a couple of weeks. Our youngest leadership class is going to go on a service project and go to a nearby retirement home and help them decorate for Christmas. So, that would be really awesome. And then something that our advanced leadership class does, we have decided this, we actually started doing this last year. But we have done these, we've like adopted freshmen, if that makes sense, like bring them into the school. And so, each of us has like two or three, probably, two to four freshmen that we like write letters back and forth, kind of like a pen pal, just to bring them into the school. So, that's been really cool. And then also, something that's really helped us throughout, like the growing years, which have been like two years now, is we've had like committees. So, everyone is like responsible for different tasks. Like we have spirit committee, assembly, and then like a bunch of other ones, like spotlight. So, the one I'm on, which is just making sure that people that necessarily aren't recognized all the time, do get some recognition in the school, and that's been really cool. Our homecoming this year was a really big success. We had 220 of the 280 kids at our school attend the dance, which is really cool. Went from nine to midnight, which was a late night for the chaperones, but it's okay. And, and we had some really cool decorations with the hall decorating we'd done throughout the school for homecoming week. Had a lot of participation with the spirit week, which was really cool. People dressed up, and it was just a really big success, and everyone had a great time. We also did DJ this year, which was very exciting. And then a couple of weeks ago, we took the OASC Leadership Oregon Association of Student Council. That was really cool. We took like six kids up there. It's pretty much like a conference for all the schools in Oregon. We got to teach a workshop there, which is really cool. And actually afterwards, we were sitting in like the conference area the next day, and this like girl advisor like was right in front of us from a different school and asked us if we'd done a workshop. And she'd actually come and said it was a really good one, like one of the better ones she saw. So, that was really exciting that we got to do that. And we will be doing, probably going back to the spring conference. And then we'll be taking probably more, like younger classmen to get them. Because this year was mostly seniors, so we're trying to get more people to be able to like, like have that experience sooner. And then, yeah, that's pretty much, we're excited for, I mean, we have like winter spirit weeks coming up. We're trying to have assemblies like once a month, once every two months. So, it's been really cool to see the, the program grow, and I'm excited to see all the fun stuff that's coming up. So, thank you.
Thanks, Natalie. So, I have some documents to share. I don't know what the best way to pass this out. So, the first document is we're, we're about halfway through our strategic plan that we developed over the last couple of years. We started it two years ago, refined it last year. We're about halfway through the plan. Within that document, you'll see some of the goals that the district has set. And the development of the strategic plan involved really stakeholders at all levels of our organization and the public. We had student voice, we had parents, we had community members, we had the school board obviously involved, and produced the strategic plan as, as our guiding light over the course of the next several years. As you'll see, one of the, one of the goals in that strategic plan is improving communication. And so, that's precisely why we're here, is to improve communication channels across the district. And we're doing that in a variety of ways. We've got a really strong social media presence. If you're not following us on Facebook, that is kind of our go-to place for posting anything that's happening in the district. So, I would encourage you to do that. If you see any events that are open to the community, we would also encourage you to join us in those events. That's another one of our goals, is to get more community involvement in the things that are taking place at the school. And whether that's attending events, or that's volunteering in our, in our schools or in our programs, we, we would love to see that happen. We've got some other goals in there around, you know, student success and things around facilities. And also, a whole pillar of, of our strategic plan is really around social emotional learning for students. As you're aware, we have students that really, COVID took a big hit to them. We've, and, and that's not just us, that's across the country, that having kids, it turns out that having kids isolated in their homes for several months is not the best thing for their psyche. And so, getting those kids reoriented back into the school system and, and learning how to interact, we're coming out of that now. We feel really good about some of the things that we're doing in the district to support our students and the things that leadership is doing to make all students feel welcome. But we feel so strongly about that, that, that was one of the pillars in the strategic plan. I'm not going to go through the strategic plan, but feel free to take a look at it if you have any questions on it. If you want to hear about the things that are happening around the strategic plan, feel free to attend our board meetings. They're the second Thursday of every month, and, and we discuss those, those items frequently. The other thing I wanted to share, you seem to be involving now. How do you keep getting up and down? The single-page item is our mission, vision, and values for the school district. We developed these a couple of years ago, again, with stakeholders from across the district. And these are, these are the, the things that we stand for. This is what guides our work every day. We talk about this frequently. Every classroom in the district has this poster on their wall. We, we talk about those in our staff meetings. We talk about those in our admin team meetings. We talk about those in our, in our school board meetings. And those are the things that drives our work. And so, just wanted to be able to share that with you as well. The other thing that we did last year is we started a long-range facilities planning committee to kind of map out where we're headed, you know, over the course of the next one to 10 years as a school district. As you're aware, there's a lot of building that's taking place within our communities. And, and so analyzing what are the impacts of, of that expansion on our facilities, as well as what are the things that, that maybe there's been some deferred maintenance over the years, possibly some neglect over the years that we need to get a handle on and, and have better control over what's taking place. For a variety of factors, we've had quite a bit of turnover in our facilities manager position. I, I, I might have the number wrong, but I think in my six years here, we've had like five or something like that. So, we have a really solid facilities manager now, who has a real handle on, on regular maintenance and has a plan in place. But along with that, is looking at the long-range health of our facilities. So, we're doing a lot of work. We've reconvened the facilities committee. Actually, last week was our first meeting for this year. We're going to have three meetings to reevaluate the plan, because some of the things that we put on the plan for last year, we've been able to complete and check off the box. So, we're going to reevaluate the plan, reprioritize the needs that we have in the district for facilities. We know some of those things can be handled within our operating budget and our maintenance budget, but some of those things are going to require other sources of capital. And so, we're just looking at how do we prioritize those things? And, and, and what is the, the long-range plan for our facilities for the district, especially as we see expansion and growth within our communities? So, that last document I gave you is a, is a facilities update. So, those are all the things that we were able to achieve over the last year. Some of those things were on our long-range plan, and some of those things were necessitated by other, other things that pop up. You'll see in there a lot of security improvements for the school district. So, we did security fencing at the intermediate school. We upgraded cameras, added cameras, upgraded the camera system at each of our campuses. It was a very archaic system. Now, we have high-definition cameras in, across the district that can be accessed on the cloud. So, any device with, that's internet access can, can access those cameras. It used to be there was one computer in the district that had access to the cameras, and that just wasn't, wasn't very functional. So, we upgraded camera systems, we upgraded our door lock systems, we upgraded our intercom systems. We had, we had the old intercom systems that were probably there when all of us were in school with the old switchboard-type intercoms. Those, those have all been replaced, so we've upgraded the intercom systems. We're continuing at, looking at ways to improve campus safety, because that is the number-one priority for us, as well as taking on some of the tasks for building maintenance. We've done some roofing projects, we've done some, there was some water seeping into the basement. We think we've got that fixed, but we'll find out here in a couple of months if, if that's taken care of as the rains continue to pour. But we just want you to know that we're, we're doing things. Oh, a, a big project too, I just wanted to point this out. A big project too, is that we have, are in the process of rekeying the district. It hasn't been done for decades, I'm sure. And, and I literally, I'm the superintendent, and I've got a ball of keys this big that I have to carry around with me to access all the doors. So, when we're done rekeying, I'll have one master key that will serve the, every door in the district. It also helps our first responders, their ability to access the, the cameras remotely, for them to come on campus if there's an incident. And we have lock boxes within the foyers of each of our schools. They can get into that lock box and have one key that'll open every door in the district is a, is a huge win for us on the, on the security side. It also is going to reduce my back pain from having to carry around all those keys. But we're able to do that in-house by training our staff on how to, and buy the equipment to rekey the district. It saved us about $20,000 as opposed to having to go out and hire a contractor. So, I say all that because I want you to know, we, we, we are paying attention to our facilities, we're doing things to upgrade security, and we're trying to do it in a fiscally responsible way and be good stewards of the taxpayer. So, that's all I have tonight. I'm, I'm happy to take any questions or comments if you would like, but thank you for your time.
Superintendent, actually, I, I do have a question for you. It's not about anything you just talked about, though. I don't, are you aware of the, the Oregon Mayors Association doing the, they, we do a contest every year, if I were mayor? And I would love to get, I, I don't know that if you, if anybody has worked with that in, in the schools here or not.
Yeah, so I've received the flyers. I forwarded flyers onto the building principals and encouraged them
Yeah, I don't know exactly how the, how that works. But anyway, I'm just, wanted to express my interest in, in doing that. So, if you guys are interested, I would love to.
Yeah, so I have an admin team meeting on Thursday. So, I'm going to try and remember to remind them that, hey, this is something that we'd really like to see happen if we can find some kids to get involved.
Yeah, I would love to be able to help with something like that, so.
For sure.
Okay, thanks. Anybody else?
Yeah, I'm David Samuel Hill. I've, I've got a kid that goes to YC. And I've noticed a couple of things. Number one, I, I appreciate the jobs that you guys do, administrators and teachers. I have no idea how you put up with the challenge of all those kids. And I, it's, it's got to be worse than free-range cats. Something that you've done really well, but I would like to see more of, is a focus on mental health. Mental health has been, has been a highlighted problem since at least COVID. Whatever you can do to open that up more for our students would be, because when you have two parents working, you don't always have the connection at home. You need having somebody, and you guys have some really good counselors that have come on board and are helping out. That's a good program. Please expand it if you can. I don't know how these things work. I'm not an expert in this field. Another thing, if you can identify difficult, to identify mental handicaps, high-functioning ASD is one of the ones that comes to mind. How can we identify that earlier? How can we get those kids help earlier? So, those are, those are my two points, but I appreciate all the work that you guys are doing. It, it's made a big impact, even at home. So, I, I appreciate it very much.
I appreciate that. And, and Counselor Hill, if, if you want to, I could go into a long explanation for how we identify students and all that. But if you'd like to have that conversation sometime, I don't, I don't want to take that time tonight. But we do, we are focused on serving our students with, with mental health needs and identifying that. So, just, just to help you understand, when I, when I first came on board, we had one, as superintendent, we had one counselor at the high school that was like a school counselor that, that you would be aware of. And then we had some contracted services through Yamhill County Mental Health. And what we did is we put a school counselor at each of the buildings, and we continue to contracts with Yamhill County Mental Health. And we are in the process right now, we partner with them, so it's a shared expense. But we're in the process right now of hiring an additional counselor to help ease some of the caseload on the one that we have right now through, through County Mental Health. But the other thing is a much longer conversation. So, if you'd like to have that sometime, we can do that. Great. All right, thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor and Council, this is the wastewater treatment plant upgrade for the city of Carlton. This is in our wastewater master plan. And as you can see in your memo, it has over a dozen upgrades that will be done to the wastewater treatment plant over the course of this entire upgrade. In 2021, the city did go and seek financial support from the state legislature. And at that time, Representative Noble was able to secure a significant amount of money, by over $5 million for the wastewater treatment plant. So, in addition to that 5.8 million, we have $1 million in city capital funds that will be going towards this entire upgrade. And now, I'd like to hand it over to our city engineer, Gordon Monroe, to talk about the bidding process and any specifics about the treatment plant and its upgrades that I may not be specifically aware of.
Okay, thank you. So, I will reiterate what the project is, which is the upgrade to the wastewater treatment plant. And it is in the facility plan, and it's aimed at two major issues. One is hydraulic capacity. And think of that as just the volume of flow that you can get through the treatment plant. And the other is biological capacity, and that's the treatment plant's ability to treat the waste that actually comes. So, the city had issues with both of those, and at times had challenges meeting the discharge permit because of those issues. And that's the reason for the upgrade. And there is a significant list of items. I'll just go through it very quickly. New outfall in the river that was required for a mixing zone study. Additional aeration, a new irrigation pump station, all-new site piping, new chemical systems, new irrigation piping, raising the lagoons, dikes, so that there's more capacity in them. Bringing three-phase power to the site, which it didn't have. Some improvements to the access road, a new splitter box, which is, the flow comes in from the pump station that sits right down near the Wernerburg Park, and then it splits. And it was being overwhelmed. It wasn't large enough. And additional chlorine contact time in piping, and some new monitoring equipment as well. And two prefabricated buildings. One's a chemical building, the other one is a maintenance building. So, that's the broad-brush description of the project. So, we had the bid opening on October 31st, that's Thursday, at 2:00 PM. It was done virtually. We had seven bidders, which is a good turnout. And six of the bids were complete. One of the bidders did not turn in the first-tier subcontractor form. They actually have two hours after the bid opening to turn that in. And per law, you cannot consider a bid where that form is not turned in. Oftentimes, contractors, if they are not the load, they won't turn in the first-tier form because they're not the low, so they're not going to win anyway. And that's likely what happened here. We don't know. So, there was six good bids. And I know you have the bid tab there, but the range of the bids, and I'm rounding the numbers just slightly, was from $4 million to $6 million, 6.35 million. And the engineer's estimate was 6.5 million, although that estimate included some work that's outside of this contract. It's in the project, but being done separately. So, if you took that work out of our estimate, we would have been at 5.8 million. So, the low bid, which is Haworth, at $4,380,000, was significantly low. And whenever that happens, my standard procedure is to call them up and talk with them about their bid and whether they have left anything out. So, Friday morning, I called. So Friday morning, I called them and we went over every. Aspect of the project. Meaning we went over all those items that I just listed. And talked about what they included and was that in the bid or not? And at that point, everything was in the bid. And then I allowed him to have the weekend to go over his bid by himself. And then we talked again on Monday. And again, he was good with his bid, confident that he had everything covered. And so as far as we can tell, the bid is responsive, which is one of the requirements of the law. So now that we knew we had a responsive bid, and I will say, if you look at the bid tab, they're required. To submit other items. They have to acknowledge all the addendum, provide a bid bond in the first tier form. And they did and all six of the other bit, the bidders did as well. And all the math was checked, all the math is good. And there were no, what I would call caveats written into the bid. So the bids were all clean. So all the paperwork. Was good and appropriate. So we checked the bidders, the contractors board, and they are in good standing. And we check references, which I will say that Haworth has done seven projects in Carlton. And that includes some major projects, a large waterline valve project. Monroe Street, East Main Street, the fire hall, the inner tie with McMinnville Water and Light and some emergency repairs. And six of those projects have gone off very, very well. One of them, the civic building has had some challenges. Tetra Tech has also worked with them on seven other projects. Including a booster pump station and treatment, pre-treatment facility at Lafayette. A reservoir, several water lines, several street projects. And those have all been very good projects where the work was good. And the end product was very good. They also supplied us with their qualifications. The documents have a section that asks for qualifications. To determine if they've done similar projects with regards to the type of work and the size of work. And we request three projects. And the three projects that they provided were all wastewater treatment plants. One of them for North Plains, one for Almsville and one for Amity. And North Plains and Almsville were strikingly similar to this project. They were for lagoon treatment plants. That needed additional capacity, both hydraulically and biologically. So very similar improvements. And North Plains rounding slightly was 6 million and Almsville was 5 million. And Amity, a million and a half. So based on their qualifications, they've done this kind of work. And they've done this size of project. So based on all of that, they are both responsive and responsible, which is the requirement. Of the state for public bids. With that, the recommendation is to award to Haworth for 4,038,000. And we have gone through the required one week. Protest period, and that's now completed and the city received no protests. So if the city would like to move forward tonight, we can move directly into contracting. And if we did that, I would assume that the contract would be signed by the end of December. So with that, I'd open it to any questions you might have.
Yeah, I just have one question. Actually, I'd like to direct it to Tyler. About the fact that we do have some ongoing issues with how regarding the civic building. And if there are any concerns or issues or whatever that we should be aware of or consider. With respect to those issues and retaining them for this large profit.
I don't believe that there's anything. That the city would even be, would be legally allowed to consider in rejecting the wastewater treatment. Upgrade bid, even though we are still dealing with some of those civic center items. We have to sort of compartmentalize the different projects. And I, I did speak with Gordon before we started this meeting to make sure. Essentially everything that he ran through for all of you that. It all boils down to they were the lowest responsive, responsible bidder. And so we are obligated to award the bid to them and it should not cause any issues. That we have another project still outstanding.
So we're obligated to take them because of city doing that or because of state law?
Because we are subject to the Oregon Public Contracting Code. So because we're a city.
And it doesn't. Not a red flag that, I mean, as like Shirley said, and I have the same concern. There've been numerous problems with this building with them as far as quality goes. That that didn't enter your minds about them. And then they are also a million plus dollars cheaper. Than the next bid down. Just how were they able to do it for a million plus less? And not come back to us with multiple change orders throughout the job? Is there a way that we can hold them to this and?
So there's several questions there and I'll try to get to all of them. And if I miss one, remind me. So with regards to the quality of their work, yes, we did consider this project. We also considered the other 13 projects that we've worked with them on. That have all gone very well. And my understanding is that they have two essentially parts of their business. One that does buildings and one that does public works projects. And the one that I'm used to working with is the public works folks. And that's what this project will be, the wastewater treatment plant, its pipes, its pumps, its equipment. And they have done that very well on the other projects that I've worked with them on. So yes, that was considered. With regards to the cost, that's essentially the part of the Oregon. Law that says they need to be responsive. So what that means is their bid is supposed to encompass everything that's on the design. And that's why we had the conversations to try to find out if they had left anything out. And we went down item by item. And he had quotes and bids on everything. And you know, I went over some of the big ticket items, but we. We also talked about, well, did you get the fencing in there? Did you get the crushed rock on the gravel access road? So we went over those items and he had them in his bid. So as far as we can tell, he's responsive. With regards to change orders. On a project typically for public works projects and particularly on upgrades. Which are the harder project to do than. Something that's just brand new because you're running into stuff that you don't know that's down there. But the city should expect around 5% in change orders. That would be normal. That would be industry average. That does not include anything that we decide we want to add. So if we said, gosh, we want to add more blowers. We want to add some stuff at the headworks. That's not part of that 5%. That's us asking for more. Right. So I just wanted to make the difference and I know you guys understand it, but. I just think it's good to say it as well. So they are responsible for everything that's on the plans. If we run into changes, they're not responsible for that. And I've seen that. I saw a project one time where they started digging and found out that another contractor had buried. About 10 yards of concrete right where we wanted to put a pipe. And so we had to get jackhammers out and jackhammer that out. Well, they couldn't have known that was going to happen. So you, you run into unknown things and you run into things that you have to address. So yes, there'll be change orders. But if he left out something large that's very obvious in, in the project, then no, he doesn't get a change order for that. Did I cover everything?
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
Tyler, do you feel, did you look over the language too of the proposal? And do you feel when it comes in appropriately? I'll probably use water. Does it look like it's?
I was not involved in the bid opening or bid review process. A lot of that is really technical, which is why we have Gordon. Look over that aspect and it's the, the contracting piece that I get more involved with. So. But that's why I mentioned that I did speak with Gordon before the meeting today about the bid and what was in it. In terms of the specifications, that would all go right over my head. I didn't go to that kind of school, but I very much trust Gordon's expertise on that.
I, I have one caveat to what Tyler said, which is the, what I would call the front part of the specifications. Or division zero is all non-technical. And that part has been reviewed by the city attorney. Starting with Walt Gao. And he made. Substantial changes to that. And we still use what Walt has reviewed. And Tyler, I, I think you have reviewed it as well. So that front part that talks about, here's the process and here's the contracting, here's how we run the project. Nothing technical. All of that has been reviewed.
Do we have any language to keep people from? Leaving 10 yards of area concrete?
Right.
Better than where do we have appropriate language to help us avoid those situations moving forward?
We have that language and, and we also, if, if this moves forward. We'll be coming back next month with a contract for what's called construction management services, which is. The engineer overseeing the work and also that includes a onsite inspector. So that will be there. For the majority of the time. So they're looking for those sorts of things and we see, when we see them, we say, hey. You, you can't do that. Clean it up. And yes, we do have language that covers that. The other project I was talking about was a smaller project where they didn't have full-time inspection. And so when nobody was looking, something happened. So that, that's what the construction management services contract is about is, is. Facilitating the construction, but also watching what's being done.
Now, was that person a state inspector or a hired source, third party?
That's a hired source and they would be under our contract. And I'm talking with a subcontractor or a different firm that that's all they do is provide inspectors. That's their business.
So that's somebody that the city is hiring, not?
Yes, the city is hiring. Right. Well, it's a contract. Yeah. You, you're not hiring them as a staff person like Amy or. They are, they would be under the engineering contract.
A quick question, Gordon. What is, can you put a number on the capacity of the lagoons by raising it one foot? Like, what does that mean in terms of, why was one foot chosen versus?
Well, during the. Facility plan, one of the things that we looked at was the hydraulic capacity. And so there's, part of that is a volume in the lagoons. And we looked at, should we build another lagoon? Or should we raise this lagoon? And it's done in a water balance. With regards to in the summertime, the irrigation. So there is a balance. So I can't give you a direct number because this, there's a balance between how much we can get rid of and how much. That we're storing that goes on through the, through the whole year. In the wintertime, there's direct discharge to the rivers. So we can discharge more than in the summertime. And in the summertime, there's not as much flow. So that was to give us more volume. It's not, that'd be hydraulic capacity. So we, if we get a big flow, we can hold it longer. And give ourselves the ability to essentially meter that out. Instead of having a big chunk go out, we can hold it a little bit longer and, and meter it out. And it gives us a little bit longer time for the biological treatment to occur, which is the air that we put in there. The air allows the bugs to live, to eat off the wastewater.
So then after this is done, how many years is this going to be good for with all the? New developers that are, seem to be flocking into town and building?
Is, it's supposed to be a 20-year plan. And that is all dependent, as you have rightly pointed out, on what actually happens. With the way the city grows and that can be both residential, commercial and potentially industrial. So if that occurs differently than what was projected, then that timing can shift as well. So it's, it's, it's not a set in stone number of years. It's based on what occurs in the city.
I move that the mayor and council approve and award the bid to Haworth Construction for the bid amount of 4,038,000. And authorize the mayor to execute all necessary documents.
Aye.
OHA has required the public works around the state to do a line inventory of the service lines and municipalities. And what they are composed of. And so. And so that Brian and Ben have been doing that inventory as requested and required by OHA. And recently, OHA has asked for notices to go out. And that's the second page that you have in front of you. Notices to go out to individual homeowners. So the first page that you're looking at is actually a portion of our website that we have created that notifies people about the project and why it's being done. And we will continue to add on to that site should we get any reporting or anything else that's required, just like we do with the Mercury TMDL. And again, the second page is the letter that's gonna go out, um, this week. And so I've asked that this item be here while Gordon is still here and maybe you'll answer any of the technical questions regarding this inventory.
Um, I'm assuming that this doesn't go out to every single customer of Carlton. It's probably a targeted, based on year of built, I'm assuming, right?
So this is just for the water service lines, it's not for anything else. And the initial survey went through to identify, okay, is it lead, not lead, or unknown? So if any lead was found, and I don't think there was, or if it's unknown, then a letter goes out to that, that home. If you're okay, you don't need a letter. That's my understanding. We do have some unknowns. So, uh, part of this is that they're requiring us to look at both the public side and the private side. So we don't have documents on the private side. And so some of those are unknown. And, uh, one of the things about this survey is that it'll continue. So those that are unknown, the city will continue to do what it needs to to find out so that ev- eventually there are no unknowns.
Follow-up, so I'm assuming that the unknown letter is gonna look different than this confirmed lead service line? I mean, this, this kind of feels like a warning, like, hey, you've, it's containing lead. But if it's unknown, that kind of seems like a false, makes people worry about something that could be not necessarily true.
I would assume there'd be some difference, I haven't seen these letters. Uh, city is putting those, uh, city staff is putting those together.
These letters are going, coming straight from the state. We are not crafting these letters, these are templates that are given to us from the state. And I was just, um, three hundred and thirty-six service lines are unknown or galvanized.
So I got an email today from OR Carlton. No reply at civicplus.com. Is that us?
That is part of the new website migration, that is how notices are coming to our residents.
Okay.
The process stands for the unknown, so are you going and digging up their side of the meter to check, say, that particular fitting right there? If it's copper, galvanized, iron, whatever? Or are you going into the house and checking if it was old-school copper, soldered?
Those are the two, two ways to check. One of them is you go behind the meter and excavate or you you can use a vacuum excavator, which makes a smaller hole, uh, and find out what the pipe is. Uh, the other way is, is if you can go into the home and, and sometimes that's not feasible. Um, so if you have to go on the property owner's actual property, then we have to get, uh, permission to do that as well.
Okay, so say they give you permission to do that, you're gonna use your vacuum excavate, uh, tools to dig the hole. Is that then gonna be a cost to the resident or is that on the city?
No, that's the city, this is a requirement of the city by the state. It, this will be done, updated yearly, and the city will be addressing as many as they can, year by year.
So then if you do find a home that is that way, what's the next step? Is it then for the homeowner to re-pipe or they have the choice to go to re-pipe or just leave it?
Uh, well, they'll be notified, if if they, if we found lead, we will be notifying them that, hey, there's lead in your service line. The state particularly has not said what the next steps are, but it, that does give the property owner the opportunity, if they want to, on the private side, to replace that pipe now they know.
I thought I heard, um, which is contrary to what typically happens, the private side's the private side. But I thought I heard that the EPA was coming out and saying that cities, municipalities are responsible for replacement.
I, I haven't heard that. But I don't know what'll be coming down the line. But typically, yeah, the, there is a, uh, on the public side of the meter, that's the public, and on the private side, that's private. And the city doesn't have responsibility for that. If EPA is gonna make a change, then, you know, they'll let us know.
Do you have a year of a cutoff date of, say, when they quit using the lead and the copper?
Yes, the, and actually, that was part of the evaluation, was looking at that date. And I don't have that date off the top of my head, but it was in the documentation that they gave the city.
Late seventies, early eighties?
Probably somewhere around there. Like I said, I I don't have that date off the top of my head.
No, this is informational only, so you know what was put onto our website and what may be going out into community to certain homeowners. Ms. Anderson, could you go into detail on this?
Yes. If you remember last month in October, the, there's a handful of us here, but we talked about, um, the peace poll project by the Rotary of Newburgh. Uh, Larry was, the Re Stroberner, I think is his name, Strober, was in. Um, he even brought a poll for us to see. Um, and so council wanted to kind of just get some details from him and then reconvene when there was more folks here to reassess. Um, you guys did mention a couple polls, one here at Civic Center and then one at Lad Park. Um, kind of reevaluated both the sites, and I have a map in there for you to review of a couple possible locations. Um, but really, if that's the route you want to go with two polls, there is costs involved um, with, with either a four language or an eight language. So you would need to decide which, how many languages you'd want on your poll and then what those languages would be. Good luck.
Um, what was the thought, again, I was absent last meeting, but, um, for two polls instead of one?
And another place for it might be the, uh, schools, but again, school board guy got away. But it's, uh, it's something that each individual school or each individual business would take on and, and finance. This is just sort of kicking it off. So one where we have our city government and one is our beautiful centerpiece park that lots of people visit.
I did send it to the school district, the Legion Hall, the fire department, uh, Ken Wright. So I sent out the flyer and the application to multitude of businesses and organizations in town as well. Kind of get the poll rolling.
Use that gap on there.
Just throw it.
So what do we need to do this evening?
Well, we would need a decision on, A, if you still would like to move forward with two polls. And if so, how many languages? And are you fine with the locations noted in the map? One would be here at Civic Center by the flagpole. The other one is in the northeast corner of Lad Park. It's the Jim Turway Rose Memorial Garden, kind of over there by the Whiskey Bowl Run. So it's not too far off of the street, a little bit more protected, but still visible.
What are the four languages versus the eight languages? And how do we pick the languages? Do, I mean, do we pick like the top four languages spoken in Carlton, Yamhill County?
It's up to you, Counselor Hill, it's up to you guys. You you can choose to go that route, you can go however you want to, however you decide. Ca- Kalapuyan, yeah.
Yeah, it's a, it's an actual real language. And obviously, English, and I think Spanish is obvious. And then, uh, I don't know about a fourth one. We have, um, a lot of visitors from, from the wineries. So Ken Wright has a relationship with Japanese people. Uh, we have a, a French-related winery on Meadow Lake Road. Maybe French would be a like, likable one. I think four is about maximum, I don't think we should labor on eight languages at this point.
And, uh, pardon my ignorance, but, uh, Native American tribe, that's from this area, right?
It, yeah, yeah, from like four thousand years ago.
I had thought of French and Japanese, I would think that those might be, aside from Spanish, the two other logical languages in terms of visitors that come here to Carlton. And, you know, we have, we have, you know, a winery here in Carlton that's, you know, owned by French. And, you know, we get a lot of, as you mentioned, Japanese guests, I don't, I mean.
Can we have this Japanese sort of restaurant? The Asian restaurant?
Well, that's if we did Kalapuya, French, Spanish, and Japanese.
English.
What is English included, I mean, is that over and above the four? You know, maybe. Is English up to be a part of that four?
Mm-hmm. So Kalapuan, English, French, and Japanese.
But Spanish.
Or Spanish, yeah, we gotta get Spanish, let's do Spanish before we do Japanese.
I would say so, yes.
Okay, so Kalapuan, English, Spanish.
Probably French.
French.
So what's the next move here?
So I would just prefer a motion, so with those four languages and then the poll locations and all the, all the nitty-gritty details in a motion, pretty please.
Okay, I'd like to move that we place, purchase and place two piece polls with four languages. On each one, those languages would be English, Spanish, French, and the native Kalapuyan. And they would be placed at, by the flagpole of the Civic Center and in Lad Park and the Rose Garden.
It's been moved and seconded. Do we have a vote here? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries? Is that, you got what you need, Amy? Alrighty. Okay, which takes us to, coincidentally, the Lad Park maintenance proposal.
As was previously mentioned, Lad Park being one of our showcase parks where people visit frequently. We have a resident of Carlton who's looking to support the city by donating landscaping services to Lad Park. Um, he would hire a third-party landscaper that he is familiar with the work. And, um, he would then take care of the maintenance of Lad Park. There, as you probably read in your memorandum of understanding, that has been developed. Uh, is responsible for creating an annual maintenance plan as well as a more quarterly detailed maintenance plan, um, submitted to the city each quarter. The city retains the right to dictate the hours the landscaping services occur because of the numerous events we have in Lad Park. And we also, um, retain the right to be able to state that we need additional maintenance services that may or may not be getting done. What this does allow us to do is to extend our park budget a little bit further. Uh, that was of interest of council of how we stretch our limited resources. And this does offer an opportunity to do so. This is obviously a very new arrangement. And so there is a termination provision for either side in the memorandum of understanding. Um, there has been talk about more capital improvements to Lad Park, improvements to maybe a retaining wall along the sidewalk, um, improving the sidewalk there. Those are all beyond the scope of this memorandum of understanding and would come to council separately for review and approval after input from your Carlton team members.
I move that the mayor and council approve and authorize the mayor to sign the memorandum of understanding with Ben Powers for donating landscaping and maintenance services to Lad Park.
Aye.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor and council, uh, the council has talked about the proposed Carlton Street Tree List for a number of months and a very thorough process with input from the Planning Commission as well as the Oregon Department of Forestry and PGE. Um, and considered all the different aspects. Uh, some trees were decided to be initially eliminated from the list and some accepted to the list. The resolution in front of you incorporates those votes. It also notes that there are a number of trees that council wants further information on from the Oregon Department of Forestry as well as others. Uh, but it is currently my suggestion to do a resolution adopting the work that you have done. suggestion to do a resolution adopting the work that you have done thus far. Oregon Department of Forestry's schedules are complex, and it, I would like to be able to implement the work that you've done thus far, make arrangements for the Department of Forestry and whomever else to come and speak to council, allow for time for dialogue and discussion, and then if council decides to make any changes to the revised tree list at that time, bring forward another resolution at that time.
Aye.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor and council, I'm going to invite Ms. Martinez to roll her chair over here and utilize my microphone. Is it on?
Okay. This is a budget adjustment. This has no fiscal impact. It's just an appropriation move. We have two actions going on here. One is the Carlton Police Department was awarded a grant for distracted driving. I've included a copy of that grant. It's a $23,500, and that's so that the general fund can receive that money. And then it'll also go into their overtime budget, so they can spend that money. When they work on these grants, it is, has to be specifically coded. It's grant time. They have to do monthly reporting and statistical reporting, which you also see in the community tidbits that, the police tidbits that go out every two weeks with that statistical reporting. They got a little bit more than they did last year, so they're pretty excited about that. They've had some really good opportunities and some good feedback from the community in particular. The last couple of months, they've been doing some targeted patrol areas, and no negativity, but good positive. The other one is appropriation move for the Civic Center. At the time of budget, we're guessing how much is on this side of the fiscal year and how much is coming on that. It's just an appropriation move. We have the money in contingency for any invoices that we're crossing over as we go through the project. This has no monetary fiscal. It's a zero fiscal impact. Any questions? Kaden?
I'll move that the city council approve and authorize the mayor to sign resolution number 2024-363, authorizing budget adjustments for the fiscal year 2024-25. Aye.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor and council, I'm going to hand this last item over to Ms. Amerson to go into details about our tourism update. Thank you.
I'm sure she's sorry in advance, too. So last summer, or actually this summer, we hired Colvida. If you remember, that RFP came through, and a tourism committee also recommended them to you. Colvida has made good strides on creating a very attractive campaign, social media campaign, as well as some website adjustments, just basic, basic maintenance, but things that will collect data in order for us to figure out who is visiting our site, and where they're visiting our site to kind of know when we do have budget, what pages and what parts to fix and implement, so that they're visiting all sites of our website. Some of the reports, highlights, you can see that in the additional then, pages here in front of you. For Instagram, the Visit Carlton has increased the average number of likes per post from 24 to 45. It's an 85.7% increase. And this is since they've taken over August. Facebook, they've reached their increase by 14.8%. An increase of 200% of published items on social media in September through October compared to July of August of the same year. So like I mentioned, they, they fully took over and incorporated in August, so they were a little slim in those months. But by September and October, they were, they've been rolling hard and fast. Believe it or not, there's a 1,510% increase number of impressions on social media in September and October compared to July and August. If that is any indication on how, I don't want to say poor, but how are, how sad our social media was impacting and reaching people. Social media is a huge tool that we can use to market Carlton and engage those outside of the 50 miles and further in order to get their visits, to come here, spend money, and help bolster our economy here. So that's huge. I mean, huge because it's 1,500, but also we're reaching more people. We're intriguing more people. They're also wanting to hire a social media influencer this month and have them come out and do a day of Carlton, visiting shops, visiting wineries, parks, just places here, and then they will use that on their feed, tag us, and hopefully keep reaching out. So those are a few highlights. So hopefully you follow Visit Carlton on social media, and you'll be able to see these beautiful posts and the, the money that we're using to create high-quality posts that intrigue people, that want to get people here. So if you haven't done so already, I highly encourage you. I can show you how if you need to. But just keep an eye out. You might hopefully start seeing more people visiting, and this is a good indication why.